Mission to order September 19, 2024 at it looks like 7:00 PM. I'd like to do a roll call.
Yes, sir. Chris Crawling.
Here.
Patrick, Patrick O'Brien.
Here.
John Cost. Vivian Diggs.
Here.
Garfield Parker.
Here.
Alan Garland.
Here.
Roger McKinley. Charles Williams.
Here.
Howdy, Wilkins Corey.
Here.
Mr. Haney's here. We have a call.
All right, thank you. Let's do an invocation and pledge allegiance. Would you lead us in that? Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and free of any question of law.
And just now for a moment. Father, I thank you for this evening. I thank you for the opportunity to serve this community one more time. Pray that you will guide and direct our paths. If there's any other time in history that we need you, we need you now. You're the guidance. Direct us. Stay my prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, gentlemen and ladies, good evening. Calling for approval of the agenda.
So move. We have to change this first, I believe.
Yes, yes, sir. When I created the agenda, I did not have a memo from the Board of Supervisors. And so I kind of wrote more in there than we were going to do. I'd like to amend item number two to basically mirror what the memo that Mr. Tadlock gave that I sent out to y'all when I got it on the 16th regarding the cargo containers. Discuss the Board of Supervisors memo regarding reviewing further regulations to the color requirements and vegetative screening of cargo container storage units. We are not going to be changing the zoning ordinance with regards to that.
All right.
But I just wanted to clarify that. The rest of the agenda is okay, I believe.
Okay. Move for approval of the agenda.
So move.
For.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And approval of the minutes for the August 15 meeting, 2024.
Move adoption.
Questions? Anybody object? All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners comments? Is there anybody on the commission tonight that have a comment that they would like to make before we start?
I'll throw something in. Last month, maybe it was earlier this month, I forgot, I was as part of participating with the Economic Development Commission, I had the opportunity to join the Board of Supervisors and the EDC in a tour over at Omega. Fascinating, fascinating. And they talked about how the business is going and issues that they're dealing with. But they're also talking, they talked about some of the pushback they're getting. They actually had a video with one of the pilots, I'm sure Charles would identify with this, actually was spotting a school of fish and they were about to start a set and a jet ski decided to intervene. And it got right in the middle of all this stuff and it got trapped by the nets and couldn't get out. And of course, that means they were able to capture this all in video. And it was fascinating, the amount of stuff that they're dealing with right now, allegedly of the notion that their manhattan population is shrinking, where there's absolutely no evidence of that that we can see. But it was a fascinating tour to see the stuff they produce and the huge variety of fish oils that they do, very little of which is for human consumption. It's almost all animal stuff. So it was really fascinating. The other part that really surprised me, they told us that they average 50 trucks a day in and out of there containing the oils or the dry fish meal, which is a lot of trucks on our roads that I was not aware of. But it's a staggering number. It was a really fascinating tour.
Wow. Just as a point of information, John, they passed a bill last year in the General Assembly to make that sort of thing with the jet skis and other things.
Yep.
Illegal. I don't know if it's taken effect yet.
It has. It just took effect. But yeah, it's a felony now. So that's a good thing. They made a point of telling us about that.
Okay. What did they do to the guy on the jet ski?
He, it was just a misdemeanor, but he had to pay court costs, damages, and a fine. So it was not insubstantial, but certainly not something that organized environmental groups would be worried about.
But at least he'll talk to his friends.
Yeah.
Good. Any other commissioners' comments? All right. Staff members' comments?
None at this time.
All right. Okay. Citizens' comment?
None at this time.
All right. There are no public hearings scheduled for tonight, so we're going to jump right into the work sessions. And we'll start with number one. Discuss the Board of Supervisors memo regarding prohibiting solar energy facilities within one mile of tidal waters.
Okay, I've got maps hot off the presses. I finished the last one today at 4:00 PM. So it was, when I first did the buffers, I was calculating the areas and I said, this is all well and good. Then I realized that I was counting the water areas. And so I had to subtract the river acreage of it. And I did not have a layer, I had a line layer, not a polygon layer. So I had to create a polygon layer. Anyway, let's just say it took me longer than I thought it did. But regardless, we'll start off with the memo. And we have the solar, we have it backwards this time because the solar is important. The board is expecting this back to them in November. That means hopefully we can finish discussion this month and then advertise for a hearing in October so we can send it to the board in November. They mentioned that at the meeting, so we're on a tight schedule here. But basically review the solar and consider not allowing solar projects within one mile of any tidal water in the county. So we'll start off with the one mile tidal buffer map. As you can see, it takes up a lot of the county, pretty much the entire edge of the county. I want to focus on the statistics here. The proposed prohibition area, that's the red around tidal waters, is 154 square miles. And that equates to 64% of the land area in the county, which is more than half. It doesn't look that much because it's all on the edges, but it adds up because of all the little curves and undulations and things of that nature. So that equals about 64% of the land area in the county. There's 191 land, 191 square miles of land area in the county. So that takes up a good portion of.
Where is the western boundary line for the county?
Goes down the middle of Hampton Hall Creek.
Well, is that line, that little faint line, is that, what is that?
What?
Come on down.
Okay.
Right there.
Yeah, that's Richmond County, I think.
That's the county.
So the edge of the pink is the edge of our boundary.
Correct.
The county.
Correct. Yes, sir. And it stops at Hampton Hall Bridge because Cardy's Mill Pond is not tidal.
Well, why is that space?
That faint line is the Northumberland County line.
The faint line is the Northumberland County line?
Yes.
Okay, that's for a warning bell.
So you can see the circles. It's basically a bunch of circles and they're, each little prong has a little circle that it makes out. So like I mentioned, it's 154 square miles or 64% of the land county. So conversely, the area that's still open for solar is 68 square miles or 30% of the county. That's the white area. In addition, we have talked with Northern Neck Electric and Dominion and we've learned that the high capacity power lines go down the main primary roads. They go down 202, they go down 360, they go down 200. And so if you were to have a solar farm, anyone, you would have to be near one of these roads because it wouldn't be cost effective to build one over here because it would cost too much money to build, get the easements, and then build the infrastructure for wires to the main power line in the county that has a capacity that could handle a solar thing. So I went in and did an exam and measured the amount of road area that's covered in each one of the red. So the first one we're talking about is this section right here, the black line of 202 going through the red. And that is 1.33 miles of the total of the road. I think it's 12.52, which equals about 24% of that road, 12 miles. And that's just 12 miles of Route 202 in our county. It's not the entire length of Route 202. And so then when you go down 360, it's, this scenario has 10.84 miles in the red area. So it's this section of Calio, then there's a break, and then there's a section in Losberg, and then there's break all the way down to Surprise Hill. And then this section right here equals a 10.8 miles, which is 33% of Route 360. And then Route 200 going down to Kilmarnick is 8.32 miles or 66% of the road is in these prohibited areas. So you know, that reduces the area. Of course, you can put it on the other side of Route 200 on this side in these areas. But of course, down here, you'd be in Lancaster if you're doing that. So I just thought having the road miles would be another good indicator of how much area is available left over once we do that. So when I started thinking about the area, we already have area that's prohibited from solar now at this particular time. It's R2 zoned areas. So I created a map that showed the R2 zone overlaid with the one mile buffer. And so the brown, I didn't have time, I apologize, I didn't have time to make a legend for this map, but I basically just overlaid the zoning on top of this. And so you can see that that definitely expands it a lot of places. In certain places, it looks like there's an error here, but it's the way they did the zoning back in the 70s at one tax map that stops. And so there's a sharp line right here. So the upper headwaters of the cone is not R2. And so anyway, just to give you an idea of how much expanding, right now in the brown, you cannot have a solar energy facility because we prohibit it in R2. So I just thought I'd give you a little bit of idea of what we'd be expanding because the brown is what we already prohibit. And then the red area between the brown and the white is what we would be expanding it to. And so I thought that would be useful to you all as well.
Question about the reason for the 100 foot, or the request for this to begin with. Is this an aesthetic thing or a concern about safety? Or what's the driver for a one mile?
I did not, I was at the meeting and watched the video, but there was no rationale that I heard. I don't know. Mr. Haney, I don't know if he has any idea. I mean, protect the waterfront land, I assume.
Well, that area in there, if you look at it, that's probably our major growth area for development. And a lot of it already is developed with a lot of houses into it. Some of it still has a lot of prime farmland in there. And we're losing a lot of prime farmland already to development. You know, we just kind of feel that we don't need to lose it to solar. It's other areas that we can put solar in. And just because that highway goes into that buffer area doesn't mean that the power lines can't be attached. The lines from the solar company or the solar facility can't be attached to those power lines. You know, they can be attached anywhere. It's just.
It's more expensive if it's far from the road.
Well, but you've got a little better areas in there that are less populated. And every time we have one coming up, it's right in the area with residents all around. And the phone calls we get on to it, it's just a large number of them. They do not want it near them. They don't have a problem with it away from them. There's a lot of wooded area over in those areas in there that you could put solar in. You wouldn't even see it. You know, you wouldn't see it unless you knew it was there. Because it's going to have a buffer around it, so you would not even see it. And that would be prime area for it.
Ordinances already require vegetative borders around them.
Regardless of where you are. But that already has a buffer there that you would not have to replant. And that's just some of the things that we're looking at.
If this does get approved, would they go by this map because somebody could get a surveyor to come out there and?
Well, no, no.
Or would you have to have it redone or as drawn up by the county?
In the past, just to give you a little history with the Chesapeake Bay Act, originally they had created a map and the map was the map. And then once you start implementing it, you realize the map is not the real world. And so in Chesapeake Bay delineations, it's not the map, it's actually the survey. So I would not think that we would say it's on the map, but you know, that's just my opinion, is that it would probably have to be measured by a surveyor. But I haven't gotten, I mean, you know, Mr. Marston is the zoning administrator, I'm not sure what he would require to prove that you're one mile.
So you'd go by the survey rather than the language of one mile from tidal water?
Right, right. Because this shoreline is quite a few years old. And so there's been erosion in certain areas. Dahmer and Marsh isn't exactly the same shape it used to be. So this is just a representation of what we'd be talking about. But I haven't really thought that far down the road. Now, with the one mile, I also went ahead and did some scenarios with a little bit less than a mile. After talking to Mr. Haney, he said we could look at different options. So I've got three quarters and a half mile. So let's look at those as well. The three quarter mile buffer. As you can see, it's a little bit less. Of course, it still covers the shoreline. And the, this, the prohibited area is 110 square miles or 57% of the land area in the county. And then, so that means the remainder is 82 square miles or 43% of the land area in the county. And again, the numbers go down, so it's only 19% of Route 202 now. It's only 23% of 360 now. And the prohibited area is only 47% of Route 200. And then I also did a overlay zoning map for this one. And in some places, waterfront zoning is about at the edge, and other places, there's a gap between the two. The one thing I will note that in our discussions years before about different zoning classes on what, where we would want solar or not, I recall we had a discussion about conservation easement. No, not easements, I'm sorry. C1 conservation zone lands and whether it was appropriate in that. And I believe the commission said it was appropriate. So we don't have any prohibition in conservation zone lands. So all this area down here, down at Bluff Point and down near Dahmer and Marsh is not zoned R2. So that would be open for solar. Currently, it's open for solar. But if we were to implement this buffer, then that conservation area is around the lower part of the county would be prohibited as well. So that's something that this will do. In addition, the headwaters, as I mentioned before, the headwaters of Cone, the headwaters of Great Wacomico are not zoned R2. So that would protect this area as well. We know Betts Landing is up there and some other, and now I think.
It would probably be helpful, I don't know if you can do it, but if you could have a satellite overlay to show the density of the housing along the area that would be eligible to have solar.
Yeah, well, I could do that with the non-addressed points, addressable structures. But you know, as I mentioned, I believe the board wants us on a fast track. So I mean, I can send that out by email next week sometime, but I don't know how that's going to.
Because Richard was saying that one of the reasons was for the density of housing in some of these areas that people didn't want it.
Right.
So.
Right.
You see a cluster of houses, that.
Right. Well, I did another scenario with a half mile as well.
Hey Stuart.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't the plan also prohibit it in the commercial hub and the support areas that we talked about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that could go on that map as well as a prohibited area?
Yeah, it could. I was lucky to get these maps done in time.
I was just asking, yeah, okay.
Yeah, but yeah, they are. So we got, I don't have the map up anymore. Let me.
It's pretty much the towns?
Yeah, the crossroads.
Burgess, Eastville, Calio.
Yeah, so there's, there's growth areas around Calio and Losberg, Eastville and Burgess, Wacomico Church, Lilian, and Reedville as well. And they, and that's basically an area we want businesses and not energy facilities there. So let's go to the zoning again. I think, I can already show you this one?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we'll go to the half mile. Okay, so this dials it back a little bit more. And if you look at the areas, it's 91 square miles is prohibited, which is about 48% of the land area in the county. And that leaves 100 square miles or 52% of the land area as a remainder in the white. And when you look overlay the zoning ordinance, the zoning map on that. As you can see, it's pretty close to what R2 is now. Of course, there's some areas that it covers that's not covered by the zoning ordinance, but it's pretty close to what that is there. So I, you know, it's up to y'all, whichever one you all want to pick. We could do another number, but as I mentioned, I would have to create new maps for y'all to look at that. But those are the three scenarios I have for you all. You know, it's up to y'all to decide which ones y'all are interested in.
I'd like to point out that we're talking about commercial facilities, basically larger scale for-profit energy plants. Solar, it doesn't affect residential use of solar panels on the roof.
Right, it does not affect.
And small business.
Or, yeah, the small, the small ground on the roof, of course, or small ground mounted, if you recall, the small zoning ordinance is up to 1,500 square foot of panels. And then the medium is for businesses and it's up to five acres. But the power is mainly to be utilized by the business on site. And it's not a for-profit energy facility. So yes, we're only talking about the large category, which is over five acres.
Now, if, say this was approved for the mile. Is that going to be the area that's in white that would be allowable? Is that going to be something that still has to go before a public hearing? It's not going to be automatic that you put solar farms in.
No.
You still have to go through the same process, right?
It's conditional use. Yes, sir.
Sir, does the state take a look at this? I mean, are we throwing any red flag up there if we automatically not get 50 or 60% of our land?
I don't know if they would, I don't know. I really don't know. You know, I'm not sure, you know, there's always tension between counties and the state. But I don't think they have authority to tell, I mean, land use is a local decision. But I don't think they have authority for it to tell us what we should and what we should not do.
Going back to the map with the one mile buffer?
Yes, sir.
I'm fairly certain that that would exclude almost all small township type areas. And most of the support areas with the possible exception of Eastville.
Part of the 360 coming down to the county line too might be still in play, but you're right. I mean, by the time you eliminate the R2s, the one mile buffer, and the commercial hubs, we're basically saying we don't want solar in the county.
Well, no, you've got a fairly substantial amount of land on the uplands.
But the point is you can't put, nobody's going to put them there because they're not economical. They have to be by the power line.
Okay, and Virginia Power has got lines running through that area. They could potentially connect to Virginia Power. Northern Neck Electric would be out of question. But they really don't have the capacity to handle a lot, a large amount of energy input and apparently have no plans to expand it. So I don't really see a major economic consequence of going with the one mile barrier. It also is a hell of a lot easier to administer.
With the one mile?
With the one mile, yeah. What does the board want us to do?
Consider not allowing any solar projects with one mile of the tidal water in the county. So I would think a recommendation or change in the zoning ordinance that says no large-scale solar energy facilities will be built within one mile of tidal waters.
That's what I am sort of envision.
And then we would have to, if that was what the planning commission wanted to do, we'd hold a public hearing at the next meeting and advertise for it two weeks ahead of time. And then hold a public hearing and then take it to the board in November.
Stuart, have you seen something this restrictive in any other locale?
I haven't, after the two years working on solar, I haven't been keeping up with it. I've not really been looking at all of the other counties. I did notice in the Rapamondic record that two previously approved projects in Lancaster County are asking to reduce their wetland buffers in a public hearing because they can't make the project work without, with the wetland buffers that they submitted. So I think everywhere in the state is getting tighter.
Stuart, my question is, if someone wanted to build a large solar facility on Law Ridge Road opposite Richmond County's project, would they connect to the main line?
I mean, I guess, yeah, I guess they could if they wanted to spend the money. Of course, like Mr. Cost said, the further you extend, have to build a line. I mean, it's not only the cost of the wire and the poles, you have to get easements and you, people don't give easements for free. You have to purchase easements to get a way to get to that line. The other thing you have to factor in, and I don't, I don't know the capacity of that line, but that. but that solar farm in Mayon is darn big. And I don't know how much the capacity of that line has left to connect to that. But it's a huge line, so it may have excess capacity. But, I mean, it's possible they can go across the county. If you recall at a previous meeting, I had discussed, we had discussed that. I'm not sure if it was Mr. Fisher that brought it up or not, that they could go on the other side of Rich Road and build one and then go across the road, connect to the Dominion Power line in Richmond County. And I'd offered that we could add to the zoning ordinance that any large solar energy facility in the county would need to connect to power lines within the jurisdiction.
Just a point of, I'm looking at the map right now. That solar farm on Richmond Road in west of Warsaw, just before the bridge, is easily within a mile of the rappahannock river. My only concern here, folks, is that if we do the one mile, there is so little opportunity left. It isn't the keeping the solar out in the short term that causes me concern. It's if Dominion Power sees we're keeping that out and that induces them to not consider expanding the capacity of the transmission lines in the county itself, then we're gonna be cutting our throats on other business opportunities as well. Because, I mean, they are under pressure to grow solar capability all over the state. And if we basically say, no, we don't want it here, if we play the Royal NIMBY on them, they're gonna say, all right, well, no rush to put transmission lines for your business growth.
But even if you look at a one mile barrier, you still have a third of the county, which is.
No, don't forget, the commercial hubs are not.
Commercial hubs?
Okay, so thirty percent as opposed to thirty-three percent, if that makes you happy, is still available for development.
But go back to Richard's comments about what brought this to the table. So the biggest area here is gonna be west of, or east of the food line. Now, that's far and it's visible from the road, now there is buffers and all that stuff. But are we gonna get the same sort of public uproar that they're contending with right now? Because it's on the main thoroughfare in the county? So I don't know that it's gonna be more politically palatable to put in those farms over by the, by Mid County and the Boys Club, Boys and Girls Club and all that stuff. There's just not a lot of options left. It says thirty-two percent, but the best resort that's down here, and that's so far from transmission lines, that's not gonna happen.
It's a hell of a lot closer to Virginia Electric than it is to.
The power lines going down.
What we're talking about doing is knocking out the Northern Neck Electrical Cooperative.
They don't have the lines to do it now anyway.
As a potential purchaser, which they basically told us they're not gonna do. And they have no present intent to do it in the future. So I don't see that as a major loss. The land that is virtually unrestricted appears to be within at most a mile of the Virginia Power lines. And that represents a third of the county, or thirty percent.
Just as a point of clarification, the power lines going down 360 are Dominion Power. And the power lines going down 200 are Dominion Power.
Right. I was thinking about this more from the standpoint of doing a hookup along Rich Road as opposed to going up to 360.
Right. And Dominion, pretty much, I should have thought about bringing a Dominion map and showing where the Northern Neck Electric serves. But Dominion kinda cherry picked the highways down the center and the middle of the county. And so then the edges are all mostly Northern Neck Electric. So they got all the business areas and where the growth would occur along the highways. And that's, that's the problem, is that the highways are where everybody can see these things. But that is where the connection is. And that is also where our villages are. So it's catch twenty-two.
I just think that by putting in one mile buffer, we're sending a message, we don't want solar. Period, period.
Well, that raises an interesting question.
What the board is saying.
Do we?
I think it's inevitable.
If you're correct, I'm not sure I agree with you just because so much is going on. That is true. Who's being hurt? A potential developer?
Potentially the residents too. If we don't get the power, if we don't maintain the distribution capacity in the county to deal with the residential and business growth, then we're not going to have the capacity ourselves.
Residential user like yourself are exempt under that regulation.
I get that, but I'm the exception, I'm not the rule. That's not that common, you know, we're gonna be, there's a lot of homes here that are gonna use more and more power. We've talked about the amount of growth, the number of temporary rentals and stuff like that. All that stuff takes electricity.
Well, I agree with you.
How do we figure that out? What percentage of our capacity are we using now? Would that be a Dominion Power question and a Northern Neck Electric question? Well, I'm assuming Dominion can answer for everybody. Their, the main lines coming in.
Yeah, they would have to because Northern Neck is not gonna be interested.
Yeah, where are we at as far as?
If you all recall, this is probably going back four years. Remember when we did the substation ordinance for the new substation in Avalon?
Right.
In that discussion, and this is just Northern Neck Electric, I don't know about Dominion. They were talking about, they had the three substations. And a couple of substations were operating in more than sixty percent capacity. And they don't, they need that extra capacity to take, and that's why they wanted to build another one to take the load off, so they would all be below fifty percent. So if one of the substations went down, then the other three would have storage capacity to keep going. So that's why they wanted to build a fourth one to make redundancy and have excess capacity in all of their stations. So that's sort of what they said then. I don't know if that's the same now. But that kinda gives you a bit of an idea of the capacity that Northern Neck Electric has.
So if our need because of growth becomes more, you don't think that Dominion or Northern Neck Electric would be interested in upgrading? They're gonna upgrade it, aren't they, if they have a need to sell more electricity, right?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
Well, when they came and spoke to us about expanding, they said they expand when there's need. They don't just build transmission lines for anticipation of future growth. They, when the growth is there, that's when they exceed, enhance the capacity. So there has to be, I guess, they know when they're reaching the capacity. But yeah, that's their job to sell business, to sell electricity. And they're, since they are the monopoly that's mandated by the State Corporation Commission, they have to provide power to new developments. That's part of their agreement for their monopoly. If you recall when they were here talking to us about that.
And I, so what I understand they do is they pay very close attention to the number of building permits they're issuing. And of course, for where they're issued. If all of a sudden somebody comes into permit office and wants fifty building permits for Project Axe, that will get their attention. Just sort of a random house or two doesn't really ring their bells. I just don't see it as a major hardship on anybody involved, including the developers, with the one mile barrier.
Opposed to the one mile barrier, just on the perception, if nothing else. But to use more than, to cap more than sixty percent of our county unavailable for solar farm, I just, I mean, I don't even know why we would have an ordinance at all. I'm opposed to the one mile.
I'm thinking fifteen, twenty years down the road. If we start with a one mile now as opposed to the half a mile, like, let's say we start with a one mile now, how difficult would it be to say, you know what? We're blocking off too much of the county, let's knock it back to a half a mile. As opposed to going the other direction?
I think the public could, at a public hearing, have just as much negativity about taking away that half, I'm in that mile buffer now. And if you take away a half mile, then you put me exposed. So, I mean, I think it could be some negativity, but I don't know.
I, building, I agree, the other challenge you're gonna handle is you make it a mile now and people make house construction decisions based on that one mile buffer. And suddenly there's a desire to roll it back. Now you've got people who are homesteading inside where we hoped they wouldn't be.
Well, understand, we're still leaving the commercial prohibitions in place for R2. As a practical matter, R1, so how much really new space is being restricted? And is that something that, as Alan suggested, could be reversible should the need arise?
I'm guessing the space that's gonna be restricted is currently farmland along 360.
Well, that and woodlands, I'm sure. But in any case, you're talking about thirty percent of the county is still open for development. That's a pretty hefty chunk of acreage.
But Patrick, the thirty percent that is on his map, most of it is too far from a county, from a main road.
You keep saying that, except if you look closely, it really isn't. You've got major highways going within a mile of the white areas the whole way.
And I'd be willing to bet, if you actually mapped those, counted the miles along those highways that are white on both sides, it's probably less than ten miles.
You only have to be white on one side to make a connection.
I agree.
So that all of.
But you keep talking about thirty-one percent. Most of that thirty-one percent is down here in the south side. So far from the transmission line.
White section of Route 360, that's about Heathville. That's already forbidden, or prohibited by the ordinance itself because that's a growth area. So.
But there are.
For all intents and purposes, 360 from Calio to Reedville is covered by the ordinance, either R2 or the commercial growth areas of the villages.
Except east of the high school.
And then when you put the one mile buffer on it, you basically, there's nothing on Route 360 or 200 that could accommodate a solar farm.
Well, I disagree with you because I've seen the maps of the village areas and what is considered to be support areas. It's really not that big, but.
In addition to the one mile, that Heathville area then is also included, which isn't showing.
All you need to do is get to the lines. And the lines are basically by 360, which is open around Heathville and open around the county line in Richmond. And then you've got 200 going from Burgess to Kilmarnock.
So just talking about Heathville now, I'm looking at the map in Section 2 with the support area and the commercial hub. If you look at where Heathville is, it'll run from, you see where the 360 emblem is?
Yep.
It's blocked off from pretty much that emblem west till it hits pink or orange, whatever it is. So everything east, southeast of that 360 emblem would be all that was open.
So basically.
Yeah, yeah. You'd have to go west, east of the high school to get to that either. Correct, yeah. Then Calio, Calio goes all three ways. Obviously, well, obviously the town of Calio is blocked out by both.
Yeah.
This, the support area, the commercial hub, and that. But when you turn left at the light.
It goes, it goes past Dollar General, but not, doesn't go all the way to.
To about Altown Road.
Right, well, a little bit before that.
Yeah, and then a little teeny bit of 202 is blocked out by support.
Little bit before the church.
Yeah. Just to give you an idea, what they look like together.
So what I'm gathering then, and I kind of agree with what Heidi said. You're sending a signal to the public, we don't want you. I don't care what kind of diastate the county is in, we don't want solar because we want to stay farm, we want to stay forest. And I think we have to be very careful because twenty-five years from now, or twenty years from now, because if nothing is done, you're just opening up, everybody's gonna build. So I think you're tying, I think you're sending a signal to, with the one mile buffers on, you're sending a signal to any business person, any landowner that's within that mile. You can't do it because we don't like it, it looks ugly. I understand the aesthetics of it, but I just think you're tying your own hands.
If you go back to the half mile buffer, you're now going from thirty percent to fifty percent of the county is developable. And it's not a huge addition.
That opens up, the biggest addition I see is that 202 is now mostly open. And the Burgess area.
Well.
Everything else is kind of, you're right.
Pick up a little bit on the south end of 202.
Yeah.
I go back to the way it was proposed in the memorandum from the Board of Supervisors. They want, they apparently want a lot. Send them up a half a mile, we're not really gaining that much. And it's very likely to be rejected.
That, Richard, you're read of it?
I can't speak for the board. I'm not sure what the board would say. I know the board's very concerned about this. They want areas for development. And we keep hearing complaints about a solar farm going in a developed area. Nobody wants it. I can look at it from both sides of the fence. And sure, solar has its place, but does it have its place in a developable area? If you're gonna develop it, do we need solar there? Dominion and some of the solar companies we've talked to, they say that they have anywhere from what's five to seven megahertz of available space on the current distribution lines. There's another project going in down in Lancaster County that's gonna be a little bit over three. That leaves mainly about five, so it's not much you're gonna be able to put in unless Dominion comes in and upgrades every piece of the line. And Dominion has said, no time in the near future. It's too costly because they can supply electricity. It's too costly because they can supply electricity, everything here, with no problem at all with what they have right now with the amount of current that they're getting now. And, you know, I would mind having it one way for my own personal use if I could cut my electric bill, eh? And I think John has done that, all right? I look at it from that point, too. But, you know, and businesses, a lot of businesses may want it to supplement their, their amount of electricity to use it. Well, that's fine, I don't have, don't have any problem at all with that. You know, when it comes down to the, to the taxpayer out here buying electricity, they'll never see any reduction in the rate. The rate will stay the same. The only person that gets anything is the, is the landowner and the solar company. If, if the person connected to these electric lines got a reduction in rate, it'd be a lot better. But you get nothing. You still pay the same amount per kilowatt, same for all the distribution charges and everything. You know, I'm trying to look at it from both ways. You know, I like to see some, but I like to see the, see the, the taxpayer get something out of it.
Well, if I may, Richard, just one point on that, though. The demand for electricity in the state, throughout the state continues to grow. And if that being the case, that means Dominion and all the other suppliers have to continue to grow capacity, whether through more distribution lines, but also more power plants. Or more solar farms, or windmills, or nuclear, or whatever. And when those new things are added, the rates go up. So, the nice thing about solar is that while it doesn't necessarily reduce your rate, it reduces the rate at which it's gonna go up anyway. So, it's one of those soft costs that's hard to identify until it happens because it doesn't happen. So, the fact is, I mean, if you look at all of the, the, the national data right now on power generation, the country is falling woefully behind, in part because of all the damn data centers, which we don't have to deal with here, thank goodness. But, um, it is inevitable that there's going to be more and more need to grow the amount of power generation in this country. And whether we like it or not, or whether we even use it or not, we're gonna help pay for it.
Yeah, I understand that. Another thing is with solar plant, uh, solar facilities, you will be getting some battery backup, or battery storage with it, that's coming. Once you get the solar facility, the battery backup is coming. Whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, I don't know. All I know is what I read about on the battery is just, if it catches a fire, it's just a big pain in the butt to put it... Yeah. And that's, that would be one drawback. And I can understand that you can store that electricity and then use it at a later time. And that's always good.
Especially in a hurricane belt like we're in, yeah.
Yeah, as long as the line's up. That's the next thing.
That's true.
If all the lines are underground, hurricane wouldn't be affecting them. But you'll, but you'll never see the lines put underground. I don't know, I, I don't know. It's, it's something that, you know, we're gonna need to consider, whether it's a mile, whether it's a three-quarters a mile or what. We're gonna need to look at it some kind of way to try to protect some of the citizens and then try to help some of the others some kind of way. It's, it's a difficult situation to balance it. And whatever we do, we're gonna be wrong. So, the board's gonna get blamed, someone's gonna say that they don't agree with it. And someone's gonna say they agree with it. The board's trying to make the best decision for the overall of the county, not just certain areas, but they're looking at the overall of the county. And you take Ridge Road over there, Ridge Road's got a lot of solar development over there right now. You know, if you, if you were to put it in on Ridge Road, you could tap into the same power source over there that transmit the electricity. It's not a thing of Ridge Road doesn't have the capability, it does. And that's the least developed area that we have in Northland County. I'm not saying that's the best area, you know, but that's the least populated. Everything around the waterfront is gonna be developing more and more over the years. Uh, that's our prime development area. We may see the little towns we have expand a little bit more. If that does, then the support area will, will expand a little bit, too. I, I just don't have a good answer for any of it.
So, Stuart, do we put, do we put that up for a public hearing?
It, whatever y'all decide to do. I, I know that the board, uh, at the meeting, they had considered a moratorium and then, on advice of council, decided not to. And then that's when one of the supervisors asked when, at the earliest, we can get this back to us. And, uh, that would be November, that is if we finalize discussion tonight and advertise for the October meeting.
Say that one more time, Stuart, the moratorium on solar for the...
There was discussion at the board meeting about that. And, uh, a council, county council advised against it.
The lady that came down that time, she said if we, I, I understood her to say anyway, that if we pass rules, we limit solar to county, the state would likely step in.
Well, that's, that's one of the things that the Rural Solar Development Coalition, uh, mentioned, is that if we put too, too much controls on it, the General Assembly could decide that, uh, that they could usurp that control and take over. And she had mentioned a bill that failed in the previous, um, uh, General Assembly. This, this, this year, I don't believe that, that bill was introduced, but I'm not sure. But, yeah, that is, that is a possibility, that the state could take over and say, solar facility is a certain size, the, the county, it's been done in other states, in the United States, where the state said, we need these, these facilities. And therefore, uh, the state is gonna mandate that counties have no say in it. So, I, I'm not sure how, how much of a possibility that is, but that is one thing she did bring up.
John, going back to what you said a while ago, can you go through that again about? The, the way I understood it was whether or not we have solar in this county. Solar from other areas is needed to maintain energy prices.
Okay. To cope with the growth.
Okay. So, energy produced in Richmond County doesn't necessarily go to Richmond County. It's put on the grid, it goes wherever it needs to go.
Right, right.
So, we don't need the extra energy. And from what Richard just said, they're way under their capacity, it's gonna be no time soon, I think, is the...
Yeah, that's, that's, that's basically what I've heard, heard from them.
So, what do we benefit? All right, it's obvious that the majority, the vast majority of the citizens here don't want it. The ones that would benefit are the landowners and the solar companies and the energy company.
Plus the property tax revenue to the county.
Okay. Does it significantly go up?
I don't know. The revenue sharing from the solar farm is also a benefit to the county.
Well, the county doesn't have revenue sharing.
But isn't there, if you had a solar farm, can't you make that part of the...
If it's over ten megawatts, and we're not gonna get those, so...
Okay.
So, it's gonna be machinery and tools tax. But then there's also the siding agreement, which, which they, the General Assembly allowed, that we can negotiate. We can't demand that they give us cash money, but there is a, a way that we can, uh, negotiate with them to get some payment for, uh, the burden of housing their facility. So, there could be some compensation for that. But when you advertise it over thirty years, it's not much at all.
Well, Chairman, the, the last solar application we had came in, when it was broken down over thirty years, we received seven thousand dollars a year. That's all we were gonna get, which is basically nothing hardly, you know? It doesn't hardly pay anything. So, that was the big thing. You know, you're looking at a large amount of money that you, that was gonna divide it over thirty years, and when it was, when it came to each year, it was only seven thousand dollars. And then you got machinery and tools tax, which doesn't bring in that much money. I wish there was some other way we could get more money out of solar, which would make it better for everybody.
Had you finished your question or your point?
I wasn't really making a point, I was just trying to get clarification, like... I know it's the board's job and we make, make recommendations to the board, but I, I just feel that the benefit that we would get from solar is nowhere near the amount of frustration that's gonna come from the citizens. I, I just don't see the, you know, if Richmond County, Lancaster County, they're gonna do it and contribute to the, to the grid and, and, for lack of a better word, muck up their, their scenery, muck up their environment, because these things are not good for the environment. They produce energy, but what it does to wildlife and plant life is just, it's devastating in those areas. If they wanna do that and contribute to the general grid, that's fine. I don't know that they've thought it all the way through when they, they approve these things. I, I just don't see the benefit for us to go down that, that route. So, I, I'm, you know, I'm not really making a point, I'm just, that's the way I see it. I, I don't see, like Richard said, if, if the taxpayers got something out of this, a lower bill, anything, okay, I'd be much more open-minded to it. But the way I see it now, they, they just don't, they don't get anything other than to look at something ugly when they drive down the road.
Is there a reason why we could not put out the public notice? In its body saying we're looking at these three alternatives? And specifically request public comment on whether it should be a mile, a three-quarter mile, or a half a mile buffer? And just take the results of the public hearing and incorporate it in a proposed ordinance and send that forward?
I, I'm not sure how, I, I, I would have to talk with the county attorney about that, I'm...
That'll, that'll kill us for November.
Well, I mean, I, I don't, you have to advertise what you're considering and...
And we're considering alternatives.
I mean, I can say yes, but that doesn't mean that I, I know what I'm talking about. I, I mean, if that's what y'all wanna do, we can do it, I mean...
So, we'd get it to the board by November because whatever came up in October, we'd then have to make a recommendation, want, based on the public hearing?
Well, you have to have the specific language you're gonna change in the zoning ordinance. And I, I just, I, I've never had this happen, I, I, I don't, I don't know how, how that would work. I mean, it may work, I, I, I don't know, but I, I can't, I, I just, I'm not a lawyer, I don't, I don't know if that's legal or not. But, I mean, if we can, uh, we could do that if that's what y'all wanna do, and on Monday, I could talk to the county attorney.
I, I agree with Stuart, it creates some complexity. I, you could probably figure out a way to do it, but I think the problem with it is, is that if you put the three different options in front of a public hearing, that everyone from the general public's gonna come and say, no, it should be two miles. If you're considering options, it shouldn't be one of these, or it should be more. The question is, can we get a balanced discussion at the hearing by having representatives from the solar industry and the utility industry come in and give their perspective as well? If that's the case, if we can get a balanced discussion, and no guarantees, I'd be fine with putting the one mile thing up for, 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 for the public hearing.
Problem we're gonna get is the most vocal citizen groups are basically gonna be the NIMBYs voting. So, if you do a half a mile, you're going to have a much larger potential body of complainants than if you did a mile. Even though the total acreage differential isn't really that big.
We all don't have to agree. If, if a motion is made to send something to the board, we have the right to vote for or against it. And if it's more for four, then it goes to the board as, as the motion is made. So, I mean...
That's why I sort of, uh, like the proposal of, of public hearing on the alternatives.
Well, if we, if we voted for it to, to go to the board, they, they, well, the board would do a public hearing, wouldn't it?
We wouldn't make the recommendation until after the public hearing itself.
You're talking about after, we've already done what we're doing, and then it goes to the Board of Supervisors, could they then have a public hearing as well?
Before they voted to approve it, uh, I would think they, the board would have a public hearing, right?
Yeah, yeah, the board would have to have another public hearing.
Yeah.
Would require another public hearing?
Yeah, it would require another public hearing.
So, that, I don't know.
I, I think the public ought to be involved in the decision. I, I'm for the one mile, but not everybody, a lot of people differ. And I'm not, I, I'm hoping we wouldn't deter the power companies from, uh, pulling back and not, uh, giving us more power as needed or for other projects, but I don't know.
Well, given the pace of developing this area, and, I mean, you've really gotta be a loony to not get an advance reading from the utility as to whether they would take the power. And then secondly, if you have to build lines, how much that's gonna cost. And that is actually built into the state's regulations. I don't think it necessarily appears in the county regs, but it certainly appears in the states. Really puts the onus on the developer to come up with a economic case that makes sense. That's why the question of the connection points becomes so crucial. And of course, if we were to specifically invite Dominion, which would really be the effective party, gives our thoughts, we should be able to handle that.
So, to have a public hearing, we, we have to, someone has to make a motion with some number in it, one mile or something else. Is there a consensus for the one mile? I mean, I mean, we get too vocal, not so much the mile fans over here, but you guys don't seem to be terribly opposed, somebody make a motion.
Yeah.
I move we have a public hearing on a one mile buffer for solar power.
Second.
I'm second.
Second.
Second by Vivian, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So, show of hands, all in favor? Four, all opposed? Four.
That's great, I've never seen...
Well, Roger, get Roger in here. Well, I'm glad we discussed this.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask you the hands again? I'm sorry.
All in favor?
What?
All in favor for the one-mile?
Right, he just needs to see the hands again, he didn't get everybody.
Okay, I got that, and I, I, I could figure out the other two.
There were no extensions. Fine, since we have a deadlock, I don't think it's a position to be in. Let me withdraw my motion and suggest we vote on the three-quarter mile compromise.
All right, motion, we accept the fact he's gonna-
So moved.
So moved, okay. How do you feel about the-
Second.
Second, all in favor, the motion is being withdrawn, all in favor?
Oh, no, you don't approve it, it wasn't, it wasn't approved, so you can move on to the next item, yeah.
So, all in favor of now the distance is three-fourths of a mile, all in favor?
Can we see that map again, sir?
Yes.
So, all in favor of the three-fourths of a mile?
Aye.
Six, and all opposed?
Aye.
So, six to two.
Okay. One other suggestion, could we make sure that in addition to posting the public hearing, that Dominion and Northern Echo Electric are invited to either attend and comment or submit written comments?
Second.
All right, so is that the motion?
That need to be, just an instruction to the staff.
Okay, just invite, just invite them if they wanna have something to say.
Yeah.
Stuart, you take care of that.
Invite Dominion and Northern Echo Electric.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Publicly or in written comments?
Okay, so this will go in, go in for the public hearing, or that?
Well, we doing the public hearing, or we, or we sending this back to the board?
At the next meeting, we're gonna advertise a public hearing, and we're gonna listen to what everybody has to say about the three-quarter mile buffer.
Just out of curiosity, what is the third Thursday in October?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. Does that give us enough time mechanically?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have to look at my calendar, but I'm, I'm off tomorrow, but I may have to go in and do the ad. But, yeah, I mean, we'll get it in two weeks, two weeks before-
Okay.
And advertise it in two papers.
Okay.
All right. Move on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and number two, discuss the board of supervisor memo regarding the zoning ordinance to require painting or vegetated screening of all permitted and unpermitted-
No, sir, that, that's the old one. The new one says to discuss the board of supervisor memo regarding reviewing further regulations to the color requirements and vegetated screening of cargo container storage units. I kind of misunderstood this, that we were actually be changing the zoning ordinance, but actually we're more discussing conditions that would be put on the conditional use, because that, as of right now in the zoning ordinance, storage containers are allowed by conditional use in A1 and by right in M1, which is the industrial. So, if you're in M1, you can just put one without any county approval. If not, you have to pay, to do the conditional use, and there'll be a public hearing, and then your neighbors can come and talk about it, whether they like it or not. So, basically, we're talking with Mr. Marston and Mr. Dadlock, this is just formulating conditions that would, could be used to let them not stick out like a sore thumb, is what I heard. I want them to blend in with the county, green and camouflage, something that blends into the native vegetation, or, or whether we need vegetated screening and painting, or is painting just enough? But basically, conditions that could be used in the future for any of these storage units that come before the board.
Does anybody have a container on the board?
I have one, and my next-door neighbor has one.
Okay, and you have one in your next-door neighbor?
No, I don't, he does.
On your next-door neighbor, what color is it?
Red, it's dark red.
Red?
Yeah, rust color, it's not rust, but it looks like it's rust.
Okay.
Sir, the worst of all worlds.
So, they are very popular, I see more and more people getting them. And they, for whatever reason, I see some on 360 and-
There's a police enforcement that's gotta have seven or eight of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, except, really, it just creates a collection point for your next trip to the dump. I'm, I'm not sure they do all that much good. I don't, unless somebody's doing a lot of construction.
What our, our neighbor is, they don't have a home next door, they have, he built a, he and his extended family all have large RVs, so they build a series of RV pads, they are now running it, in fact, they haven't been there in two years, but they store their camping equipment in it.
Oh, okay, that makes some sense, but I assume, I don't know what the weather would do with it.
And they haven't been here for three years because of the weather.
From, from what I understood from Mr. Marston, as far as effective, cost effectiveness to store square foot of, of materials, it's one of the cheapest options out there.
Just out of curiosity, what do one of these containers go for? I assume they're, they've already finished their useful life for maritime shipping or rail shipping?
Six to eight thousand dollars, easy.
Probably, I think.
Yeah. And they're being used all over the place and-
From, I, I talked with the board supervisor member that made the motion, and he, he was mainly concerned with the view from the road, from a right-of-way. Not, he said, I'm not, I don't really care if you paint the roof or the backside, but the side facing the road, I want it to blend in, I, I don't want it to stick out like a sore thumb. So, you know, that, you know, that's something we can put in a condition, is that if, if the container is visible from the road, it must be painted in a shade that camouflages with the native vegetation, a green or a brown, and, you know, I imagine there's some guy out there who's gonna paint it neon green, but, you know-
Well, but it would also gonna require some sort of screening.
Well, that's, that's what, yeah, if y'all want paint and vegetated screening, when I talked with Mr. Marston about what, what type of screening, how big of screening, and we mentioned ten-foot, and he said, well, you know, you get canopy trees, and then you're just gonna have trunks, and so you're gonna be able to see it when they grow up. And then I said, well, we'll mix a vegetate, coniferous and deciduous, he said, yeah, he said, well, we've already got the twenty-five foot for the solar, and I said, I thought twenty-five feet's pretty, pretty-
Necessary.
Yeah, I mean, that, for a storage container, twenty-five feet of plant material is not cheap. So, I mean, it's up to y'all, what y'all wanna do, but Mr. Marston said, we have that twenty-five foot, and, you know, so he kind of recommended that. But it's up to y'all what, what you wanna do. But I, I would consider a, a mix of deciduous and coniferous, evergreens and, and regular trees would probably be the best screening you could do.
Well, just give them the cost of doing the screening. Wouldn't you expect people to use shrubbery as opposed to trees? I don't, I don't know.
By the way, I've just looked, there's a company in Baltimore near the port that sells them, twenty-footers are fifteen hundred and seventy-four dollars plus shipping, the forty-footers are nineteen ninety-nine plus shipping, and IQ forty is twenty-two seventy-four, that's just wider. So, they're not, but you're now getting to the point where you're spending a lot of landscaping, it really, it could double the cost of having one of these.
How much is a twenty?
Twenty was fifteen seventy-four, they're on sale right now, by the way.
Fifteen seventy-four?
Right.
That seems awful cheap. That seems low, that was, that's lower than I would've thought.
Is that to get it here too, though?
No, not including shipping.
The shipping's gonna be a little rich. You gotta pay a freighter to come down.
But any of these requirements is not gonna eliminate the need for a conditional use?
No, we're not talking about changing the zoning ordinance, we're not changing about adding districts, now it's only allowed in A1 and M1, and by right in M1 and A1 by conditional use only. So, there's no, the, the member that made the motion said he doesn't wanna change how we handle them, just make them blend in.
So, they want, they want us to make the, or make a suggestion as to the conditions?
Yes.
That would be across the board for anybody that wants this, instead of doing each one on a case-by-case?
Everything that is currently here is grandfathered in.
Well, that's not, not necessarily the case, but Mr. Marston's working with the person on 360, and you can't say you had a container before the zoning ordinance was created, 'cause I don't think they were a big thing in the seventies. I've certainly gone from, I'm sure they used them in, in the ocean and on ships, but as far as using them for storage, you can't say, well, this predates the zoning ordinance, 'cause if it did, it'd be rust, it would be rusted full of holes if it was. So, any one of the storage containers here are, that are, that are not, don't have a conditional use are definitely out of compliance, and I, and I'd have to defer to Mr. Marston on what actions he's taking, but he is, he is trying to remedy the situation.
Now, how is this existing regulation, whatever it is, how is it enforced sheriff's office?
First, and again, I, I just noticed by working with Mr. Marston, I'm not involved with it, but he, he sent the notice of violation letter, and then after that, I'm not sure what the, what alternative is.
So, that, the notice of violation letter is issued by who?
Philip Marston.
So, that's the enforcement?
That's the first step, I'm not sure about the next steps.
So, we really don't have anybody driving around the county writing down addresses of-
Enforcement of the current zoning ordinance is by citizen complaint.
Okay.
So, if a citizen writes a letter and signs it and says, I have a problem with this, and it's not in compliance, then it will be investigated. But no, the zoning officer does not go around looking for things.
Okay.
What about disposal? We don't wanna get into that. Disposal?
Well, I mean, that's not what the board asked about.
Okay, board just asked us to blend into the native vegetation or make it look pretty-
Further regulations to the color requirements and vegetated screening of storage units, cargo container storage units.
All right.
So, I think we're probably in agreement that it has to be painted at least a basic color, but it has to be painted something.
Blend into the surrounding?
Yeah.
In other words, you want to paint it army green?
Not psychedelic.
Well, you could theoretically paint it yellow if you wanted to, but-
That'd be morbid, I saw.
Yeah.
Yeah. How do you feel, Mr. Crowley, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, I don't know, what's the setback on, same setback as it would be for a fence or anything else, to put one of these?
Um, I think it would be considered an accessory building, in, in most areas, it's less than a primary structure, about four feet, I think, is.
That's it.
Yeah. But the conditional use is open-ended, I mean, they could say you have to be twenty-five feet from your neighbor, 'cause the neighbor's not happy about it. So, I mean, the conditional use has, you know, that, that's the thing, there's, you know, a balancing act between you put in the zoning ordinance and you have to do it for each and every one, or you have the conditional use and you can tailor it to whichever particular circumstances are there. So, if you have pushback from one neighbor, well, maybe if you move it over, then you could do that, but I guess they're just looking for language that they could use that, for conditions when, when they come up. Now, if a citizen had a farm field and it was a, it was a little cove and there's vegetation on all three sides and you couldn't see it from the, the road, you know, I'm not sure we wanna make them paint it and put vegetated screening on there, but for those that do, I think they would like some guidance on what, what we, what we think they should require.
So, are we screening it from the road, or are we screening it from neighbors, or are we doing both?
Both, well, I mean, the board supervisor member said from the road, but if a neighbor comes to a public hearing and, and is, is not happy, then that, that's one of the ways you can hopefully make both sides happy, a compromise. Of course, you know, it's up to the board what they wanna do, whether they wanna deny it outright or try to get some concessions from the applicant.
And be talking about one story or two stories? All right. Because if it's that price that you're talking about, fifteen hundred dollars, I might get four stacked on top of each other.
You have the equipment to stack them?
I'll have, I'll figure out a way.
Yeah. Forklift's a lot more than that.
Yeah, I, I've not come across the stacking.
Good for houses, though. You can buy some of those, those-
It's less impervious area, but then you have to build stairs to get up there.
You just keep the fork with you.
You gotta have a friend operating for it.
There you go.
I would suggest, and I will make a motion to this effect if you want, that we have language that basically says, if you have a storage unit that is visible from a public road or your neighbor's property, it must be painted such that it blends in with the environment in which it's located.
Might I leave it silent as to screening?
I'm not sure, I know what the word screening means now.
Some sort of shrubs or, you know, vines or something.
Oh, I see what you're saying, so it, it must be painted a color that blends in and/or have a screening, a natural screening of some sort around it, a screening of some sort that makes it invisible.
What? Rubes, tree, have trees and rubbing?
Cement wall.
Up to there.
Cinder block wall. Does that make sense?
I, I, I see what you're saying.
Motion. It does, let's-
It may, may have been a little, I, I think it was the first time you were, it was coming out.
Yeah, I like the way you said it, though, it was just-
Okay, this is what I got, let me, let me see if I got it. If you have a storage unit that is visible from a road or a neighbor's property, it must be painted to blend in with the scenery and/or natural vegetated screening, or, did you have vegetated in there, or did just, okay, natural vegetated screening to hide such a unit?
That's and/or, so one or the other, either painted or screened.
Yeah. Well, maybe we have to cap it so that it is less, significantly less visible to anybody from outside your property.
That's offensive.
That's so subjective.
Yeah, that's offensive, because if I don't, and he, he period.
Well, is that gonna be part of a conditional use permit anyway?
No. Am I asking it?
Well, I mean, yeah, you would wanna tighten up the language if you're gonna put it as a condition.
I don't know if anybody would ever do it, but would anybody ever put vinyl siding on one of these things to make it blend in and look like a pole barn?
I don't think you could say, I don't, who knows what anybody would do, I don't think you'd say it would not happen, I mean, they could put fake windows in the front of it and make it look like somebody living there.
The way I said the motion, so that it blends into the environment in which it's located, would be-
So, you'd be okay with, you would consider that to be a blending in?
Yeah.
We have some very creative people, so.
Yeah. Well, you could also do-
I don't know if anybody would ever do it, but would anybody ever put vinyl siding on one of these things to make it blend in and look like a pole barn?
I don't think you could say, I don't, who knows what anybody would do. I don't think you'd say it would not happen. I mean, they could put fake windows in the front of it and make it look like somebody living there.
The way I said the motion, so that it blends into the environment in which it's located would be.
So, you'd be okay with, you would consider that to be a blending in?
Yeah.
We have some very creative people, so.
Well, you could also do, you know, like hurricane fencing with the green sheets, to use a tennis courts and things like that. That wouldn't, that would be expensive, but not necessarily prohibited.
Paint it the color of a herd of deer.
Yeah, large cows on it, yeah.
I would second that motion as wordsmithed by Mr. McKenzie.
Oh, that was with Mr. Goss, basically, yeah. But yeah, I mean, we, I, I can talk with Philip and we can keep the intent and perhaps make it a little less wordy and, I mean, this is not gonna go to public hearing, this is not, this is an internal recommendation document, so, and again, it's not time sensitive like the solar was either. So, if, if Mr. Marston has significant problems with it, we can talk about it in the next meeting. But that, that sounds, that sounds.
If the end-all and deal, we could be with the board, depending on the location, the law and all of that. They could add additional visions on top of that.
Right, that, that's just one condition. They could, they could make many more. And, you know, even, some people might rather look at a fence than a storage container.
Exactly.
So, there, there's multiple options, and that's the beauty of the conditional use is that, and the public hearing. If you hear a citizen company express a certain concern, and if you can think of a way to address that concern, then that hopefully maybe would be, allow both of them to get what they want.
Well, Stuart, so with that, was that a motion and we have to vote on it?
It was a motion.
Yeah, it was seconded.
So, who seconded? Okay.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Board of supervisors.
All right.
Okay, Stuart, we're gonna do anything with the comprehensive plan tonight?
You're the chairman.
Listen, y'all got it here at eight-thirty last month. I read the minutes.
I've got guests at home, so I'd rather leave.
Okay, and we'll continue our discussions.
Well, if, if we, if we do wanna cut short, can we talk about Hampton Hall?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Well, if y'all had read chapter four, I wanna do that first, because there is a section on Hampton Hall in there. We'll need to modify it, of course. But another thing I wanted to bring up to you is the Virginia Outdoors Plan. I'm not sure if you're aware of the Virginia Outdoors Plan, but the Department of Conservation and Recreation, every few years, I'm not sure what the schedule is, but they do a Virginia Outdoors Plan that basically documents the needs for recreation and outdoor recreation in the Commonwealth, and then puts forth strategy to address that. And when they did it last time, I was at the PDC, and if you look up on the screen, there's this Northern Neck Region seventeen. They have a region for by planning districts, and it talks about the activities that people need and things of that nature. So, then I added this in the regional feature project, provide gravel and low maintenance improvements at Hampton Hall Creek in Northumberland County. So, that's something we can leverage to get funding, hopefully from VDOT to build the road in there. I researched, well, I contacted VDOT and they say, we'll need to get an entrance, entrance plan. And it's a engineering document that shows the site distance and examines the speed limit and the width of the pavement and the braking distance and the width of the entrance. It's a, it's a big to do, and you have to have an entrance. And they, when I talked to them, they said it was a low, it would be a low-volume commercial entrance is what we would need, because they did it by the acreage, and I could kinda have a little heartburn with acreage, because it's three point six two, but one acre at least is weapons, so, and we're only asking for five. But anyway, they say it's a low-volume commercial entrance, 'cause it can't be a private entrance, and that's the lowest level of a commercial entrance you can have. So, they said we, we needed an entrance plan, and that needs to be submitted by a professional licensed in Virginia to be a surveyor, landscape architect, or engineer. So, with that information, we, I asked Philip to ask a few of the engineers and surveyors around if they could prepare one of those plans. And we got, one said they didn't want to fool with it, 'cause VDOT's hard to deal with. Another person said that they had conflict of interest, they couldn't do it. And then a third person or a company did submit one, it's about five thousand dollars. And that's just for the plan to submit to VDOT to see if we can get access to the road. And if you recall, we have fourteen thousand dollars in, in the Chesapeake Bay Access Public Authority funding from the PDC for the Northumberland County. So, I read, at the same email, I asked about the VDOT Road Access to Park program I mentioned before, and they sent me a link to that, I researched that, and VDOT will pay to build a road into a site that's a park or recreational facility. They will do the entrance, they will do the engineering and stormwater work, and they will build it to VDOT standards. Now, there's caveats on it. One of them is that, basically, you have to, they, they want the amenity to be ready for use when they build a road. They don't wanna build a road, then two years later, you're gonna build a ball field or whatever, the trail or whatever. They want it to almost be ready for completion then. And so, it, and we talked about this before. I, I'm not so worried about what we're actually putting on the water. This is a waterfront park. We're gonna have picnic tables, and it's gonna be a viewing area, and then we can work out the logistics on boat ramp, kayak launch, however you wanna do it at a later date, and go after recreational saltwater funding that we did for the Fisher Pier and try to get money for the actual water structure. But for right now, it's just a waterfront park. And Mr. Basie, I talked with the Assistant County Administrator, and we discussed this for, at length, and he saw, thought it might be a good idea to involve the Boy Scouts Eagle Project and build a couple of picnic tables down there. I, I previously told you that wasn't really growing up there, and I visited a few years ago, and then come to find out, that was ten years ago or longer. I went down there last Thursday, and the vines are everywhere, and trees are everywhere, and I got my loppers and spent an hour there and barely made a dent in it. But basically, there is a roadbed there, but it's got trees in it, and we really need to get that thing cleared up and cleaned. If we were to pay the money to do the entrance and spend the five thousand dollars for that, that's something that VDOT will do in the grant program. But in order to get VDOT down there and look and say, this is a good place, we need to clear the vegetation off that road. Another thing about the grant program is they will not build the parking spaces. So, the handicap parking space and the five parking spaces, we'd have to build ourselves. But it does say that they would build a turnaround, so I'm not sure. I wanted just a, an L where you pull it back up, but Philip said they may require a turnaround at the water. But if they're building it, that's fine. The other thing is if they require a turn lane, then they'll put in a turn lane, pay for it themselves. So, I think we should hold off and not spend any money on the entrance until we apply for that grant program. But in order to get that, to get, to see what we have, we need to clear the vegetation. So, I would recommend that the board, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the board that the county spend, get some quotes and get a tree removal company, a brush removal company, and to clear the road out so that we can access the site, see what we've got, and show DCR, VDOT, and everybody else what we got, and allow surveyors to go in there and be able to survey the road and the site, and make that a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the board to use the Access Authority money for that. I'm not sure how much it's gonna cost, two, three thousand dollars, but all the board can do is say no.
Would the bush hog do it?
No, sir.
Bush hog would do it.
No, we're, we're talking salins like this and vines and stuff like that. Yes, Mr. LeBryan?
Before we do anything else, don't we have to ask the board supervisors to declare this Hampton Hall land a county park?
The memo from the board supervisors was to explore the possibility of creating public access at Hampton Hall Landing. So, if they want public access at Hampton Hall Landing, then that means that is access. If you have a park, you can look out over the water and see the ducks, then that is public access to the water. So, they've already gave, told us they want that developed.
All right, so we, apparently, there is a process you need to go through to have a piece of land declared to be a park. And my dealings with VDOT convince me that that's where they're gonna stick it to. Who says it's a park?
If y'all wanna include that in your motion, that's a recommendation, that's, that's good as well. I, 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 I mean, it, it is, I, I don't think the, the non-enclension really matters.
Okay, well, humor me. I move that we ask the board of supervisors to declare the Hampton Hall acreage a county park, thereby eliminating any possible ambiguity that may come up in the course of discussions with VDOT.
Wouldn't they?
There has to be a second before this discussion.
Pardon me?
Is there a second?
I'm not the chairman.
Is there a second?
Is there a second to have it declared a park?
The word park's not gonna cost us more, is it?
Absent, absent second, I would suggest an alternative. The, what they've asked us to do is explore, and what Stuart has suggested requires that we get some machetes and go explore what's there in order to figure out if it can be parked. I think it's premature, Patrick, to declare a park at this point, 'cause we don't know what's there, how bad it is. So, could we, okay, do as Stuart suggested, have the county send some, some maintenance people or get a contractor to go clean it up and see what it looks like.
Well, see, that's the thing. The board has the power of the purse strings. If it's gonna cost money, we have to ask the board permission, and if it comes out of general fund, that's something that's not funded. So, I would suggest we say a recommendation that we use the Access Authority money to clear the roadway on Hampton Hall so that.
We can explore whether it's a legitimate park.
So that we can move forward with making a public access facility.
I'll make that motion.
I need somebody to, I need to be able to write that down, and could we?
I move that the, the Planning Commission recommend to the board of supervisors that it use, what's the name of the grant?
Access, the access.
It's a, there, there's a Northern Neck Chesapeake Bay Public Access Authority that has fourteen thousand dollars of Northumberland money, and it's a planning district that holds it, but to utilize that money.
To utilize that money to provide necessary maintenance to determine the, the conditions there and for to determine if it should be declared a park.
You have a second?
Yes.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, all right.
That, that's appreciated, thank you. I, I just wanna keep moving forward.
Thank you for the work you did so far.
Why don't you send us a message, let us know next time you're going up there, well, I'd, I'd go up there and take a look.
Okay.
It's deep.
I, I got there, it was, it was getting dark, and it was probably about six-thirty, and, and I didn't even try to get to the water. I, I mean, I just started cleaning, 'cause the vines, they were climbing vines, and they're the sticker vines, and I didn't even try against the water. But if I recall, last time I was there, well, right when we did that grant, two thousand and five, or four or five, so that's twenty years of growth, so you can imagine how thick it is down there.
Probably best to wait till winter. Or spray it, now it'll wait for it to die.
Well, I mean, the chainsaws need to be employed, and I don't like using a chainsaw myself. It's usually not, it's always good to have somebody by. But I appreciate that, and we'll, we'll make that recommendation and send it to the board for the next meeting. And staff will get a couple of quotes from brush clearing companies to accompany that, so if they wanna move forward, we'll have some estimates in hand.
Stuart, do you have a, since we're gonna delay the chapter four, is there any, a board supervisor report?
Yes, sir. At the last meeting, there was a request for a no-ake zone on the Great Wacomiko at, I can't.
Gleep Point Bridge.
Yeah, the Gleep Point Bridge, I'm trying to think of the oyster company's name. The, where the old hotel was gonna be underneath on the other side, across from the Fisher Pier. And the board did not deny that.
Gleep Point Bridge.
Gleep Point Bridge, Route two hundred bridge at the Great Wacomiko, yes, sir. And then there was an application for sheep on a forty-three acre parcel in R2, and that was denied due to, due to neighbors. I think it was twenty sheep and twenty chickens, and if you recall, the R2, we said six, well, I can't remember now. One livestock per couple acres, anyway.
No roosters.
Yeah, so, so they denied that. Then they had an application to build a processing facility at Cockrill's Marina, and it was a ten, one hundred by seventy-five foot building where they're gonna shuck and, and process oysters, and they tabled that. They did not make a decision on that.
That's over Hacks Neck, right? Close the concern.
Neighbors, and it's actually family neighbors, so there was a, there was a bit of family dynamic going on in there. And bequeaths from their father and splitting, and I didn't get my fair share, things of that nature, so.
Oh, well, in a state town.
It's a sticky wicket.
Are there any public comments?
Yeah.
I wasn't gonna do this. The buffer zone, probably the biggest area that needs to be considered for protection and true consideration is where the lines are, two hundred, two oh two, and three sixty. You're gonna relegate anybody that comes in for solar power. They're gonna have to be away from the water, but you've also cut off sections of three sixty and two hundred and so forth. And I think, it's just an observation, that if you're gonna make it possible at all, you actually need to focus a little bit more on where the lines are and say, well, maybe we need to have a setback off of the main road, because we've got businesses in these centers, and not so much kind of a balanced approach between where the lines are and where the, the water is. So, it's just an observation. And that last topic, I, I don't know. Stuart, I do wanna correct you, though. I was there at that board of supervisors meeting, and on paper, you're right. It does say seafood processing, but multiple times during that meeting, those people said, no, we're not changing our, our existing processing, we're not adding to it. They came out and said it. In my particular view, just me, Jesus, I, I don't know what exactly that application actually represents, since it doesn't really talk too much to reality, but there is growth happening here, and I, I think that the buffer is gonna help some people, their perceptions, more than it's gonna do anything else. That's just me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Would there be anyone online that would like to have a comment? No one online? Okay, all right. Closing public comments?
We adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We adjourn.